Does it really grind your gears when you hit a pothole? Does it leave your tire all flat and junk? I may be dating myself there a little bit. The doc has the remedy, however.
I'm Mayor PJ Connolly, our president of today's workshop. First, I call honor City Clerk for the roll call.
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor of Tim Daniels has let us know she will not be attending the workshop. Councilmember Norman.
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Skelly.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Right, Mayor Connolly, you have a board.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager.
City Attorney has a request to change.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor and Council, I request the Council add a closed session item to be read and considered after Section 4 New Business, Number 2 Watershed Master Plan. The item would be considered after that if it's approved.
All right.
What was that?
A closed session item to be read after Section 4, Item Number 2.
What would take place at the end of the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Not between workshop and rego schedule?
It would take place at the end of this meeting before adjournment. We have time.
Yeah.
Got it. Second?
All right. Motion to approve the agenda as revised. Councilmember Skelly, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye. Those who say nay?
Motion passes 5-0.
Let's move on to new business. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item Number 1, annual update from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We have with us the President of Visit Greenville NC, Andrew Schmidt. What does the President?
That's good. All right, perfect. Good afternoon. Hope everybody's doing well. I'm Andrew Schmidt, the President and CEO of Visit Greenville NC and also Play Greenville NC Sports is how we brand our sports commission. And I just wanted to take about 10 minutes and just give you a quick update on how travel and tourism is doing in Greenville-Pitt County. Talk a little bit about what the future looks like for travel and tourism. And then do you want to just give a quick recap of Little League Softball World Series? We haven't done that. We'll do that for you. And then just a quick update on staffing at the CDB. So want to start here. These are 2024 tourism numbers. We don't get these until basically August, September. It takes a while to get them. It's a study done by a company called Tourism Economics and it's done through the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina. All good news here, some really good news here. So you can see the economic impact is $320 million. That's what travel and tourism brought in into Greenville-Pitt County. That's a record. That's our third year in a row. It's a 2.3% increase, which is good and solid. We have 100 counties in North Carolina. Thirty-one of them actually had decreases in travel and tourism expenditures.
Thirty-one?
Thirty-one, yes, sir. Now, some of that was due to Hurricane Helene. About eight of those counties were Hurricane Helene related, but others were not. So it was a softer year for travel and tourism across our state, but we still did very, very well. Obviously, if that $320 million goes up, all the numbers below go up, but we had some good revenue generation for taxes. State taxes just under $12 million. Local taxes generated from travel and tourism under $10 million, but closing in on $10 million. Tax savings per resident, that's always important when we talk to other groups that really aren't familiar with travel and tourism. The more we can bring in, the less taxes people have to pay. So average citizen states saved about $123 on their taxes. Set a record in employment. Thank you, Matt Skelly. You helped with that number. So over 2,100 employed through hospitality-related jobs in Pitt County. And then we ranked 26 out of 100 counties when it comes to travel and tourism. That's a big, important number for me because you look at some of the larger cities, you look at some of the leisure destinations like the beach and the mountains. So we do very, very well with what we call our comp set. Those are cities that are very similar to us. So we ranked 26 out of 100. And.
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
That last number, do you know what we were last year?
As far as the rankings, you have 25th.
So all of this is so awesome and I love it. I'm just surprised we're not higher. When you look at our Little League World Series and when you look at football and we look at all the things we do, why do you think that not? I mean, I'm kind of putting on the spot.
Sure enough.
However, you feel most comfortable, but can you talk a little bit about maybe why that number isn't as high as it could be?
Sure. There's certain cities that are automatically going to be higher than us. Those cities that have larger populations, bigger convention centers, bigger hospitality amenities like your Charlotte, your Raleigh, Wilmington, Asheville, et cetera. So those cities are going to be, because they have more and they're bringing more people than we have the capacity to bring in. Then you've got what we call leisure destinations, true leisure destinations in the beaches and the mountains that are, you know, you think a little town like, you know, Boone, they're much higher than we are. So it's all about the tourism assets and people that are coming there all year long to vacation and spend money. Same thing at the coast. So we really start to dig down and say, okay, what are cities like us that have the same amenities that we have and that the same size that we are? So that really starts, really, you know, you've got two cities that are ahead of us that are more similar than us. Hickory is one of them. And I'll tell you one reason Hickory has jumped us because we were 25th, now they're higher, it's because they built an indoor sports complex along with their convention center. So they brought in a lot of things that they didn't bring in the year before. And so that's important. Johnston County has also jumped ahead of us as well. And the only reason they jumped ahead of us is because we're on 995 and they built more hotels. So not the amenities that they have. But if you really look at our competition set, we're doing really well.
Is there any use of looking per capita visitor spending? Would that provide any interesting additional information?
I have a slide on that in just a few minutes.
All right, thank you.
We'll talk about that. It's actually what we call the percentage of visitor spending in the different areas across the state.
Okay.
It's a great question. So those are some numbers there. Looking at where that money was spent is very important. Our food and beverage at 36% is the big winner. Why is food and beverage higher than hotels or some other place? Because we have three different things that we look at with food and beverage. We do have a lot of sports tournaments, meetings and conventions and things, reunions that come in that eat out. We have a lot of backyard tourism, which is a lot of culinary travel from other counties next to us. They don't have the restaurants that we have in Lenore County and Wayne County and Martin County. So they'll come in and eat. And then we have a lot of day travel to Greenville as well, whether people are working here or getting their education here. So food and beverage is big. Transportation, 23%. That's your Uber, your Lyft, your car rentals, you know, airport gas purchases, lodging, Airbnbs, hotels and Airbnbs, recreational retail. So again, the idea here is that travel and tourism dollars touch a lot of different types of businesses. Quickly here, just the trends. Our trends have continued to go up every year and that's what we want to see. Obviously, we took a dip in COVID '22. We bounced back, set a record. '23 was a record. '24 is a record. So we anticipate '25 to be strong as well. So Ms. Blackburn, this is actually what you're asking in some breathlets. So in-state, this is probably the slide I'm most excited about. We're in the top five origin markets for people traveling in North Carolina. That's big. Now, they do put areas and subsets unless you're Charlotte, which is its own animal, and Wilmington, which has nothing else around it. But if you look at that, 9% of the travel that's coming into the state of North Carolina is coming here or in the New Bern, Greenville, Washington area. And we know from the numbers that it's mostly Greenville that they're coming to. Now, New Bern does have some tourism that they bring in people, but mostly that's us. But the really great thing about that is that light blue line is 12.3%. That's the visitor spend. So our visitor spend is higher than the number of people that we're bringing in. So people that are coming are spending more than average. You can see some of these numbers, the visitor spend is actually less than the number of visitors coming in. So this is the best indicator for us that we're doing very well in our market and across the state of North Carolina.
So we're the fourth in the state in terms of percentage of visitors.
Correct. That's correct.
That's amazing.
Yeah. And so that kind of, again, day travel and other things like that really help that number. So let's look at what it looks like moving forward to 2026. This is the Smith Travel Research Report and CoStar Report on what the hotel forecasts are for 2026. You've got five different areas. I don't take a lot of stock in the supply. That is really for your individual destination. We do have one hotel under construction. That's a Home2 Suites. It's going to be behind the residence in. Data will be ready in 2026. But overall, across the country, there's more hotels being built. That's what that top one says. Demand is really important. That is, how many people intend to travel as compared to the year before? And that's up 1.1%. That's what they're forecasting. Occupancy is up just a little bit. Average daily rate quite a bit at 1.3%. And then revenue per available room, that's really important when you look at occupancy taxes and what you may look at moving forward. And that's a forecast should be up 1.5%. So pretty much all good news when it comes to what the hotel forecasts are. And this was just done. So you've got obviously three months to go, but this is a good indicator of what we may be looking at at 2026.
When it comes to our hotel inventory that we have, I routinely get asked, the question is, do we have enough inventory in Greenville-Pitt County to be able to support the tourism and the needs of people coming to our area?
I would say yes and no. You know, on certain, yeah, that's my political answer. On certain weekends, we do not. You know, this past weekend was homecoming and we had people staying in Kinston and Washington and as far away as Wilson and Williamson. So, you know, there are certain times we don't. We have 2,300 hotel rooms here. Some of them are not as the same caliber as others. So there may be times where we do have sufficient. Sometimes we don't have sufficient. With a, hopefully, a full-on sports complex coming, we will need more of certain types of hotels, I would think, so.
When you say overall, then I guess the hotel industry is relatively stable given the amount of rooms that are being rented on, I guess, a regular basis?
Yeah, we run about for the year, the average is 60% occupancy.
Okay.
So that's solid. But you just have to kind of look at what hotels you have and what the needs you need to fill.
Sure, I'm sure that each of them are different.
And really, and I don't know how much you want to dive into this, but really it's a supply and demand situation. If you look at a lot of the hotels, their revenues have been really good. All right, so their occupancy rate is somewhere around that 60%, 65%. So clearly their revenues are real high. If you reduce the revenues, I mean, reduce the rates, your occupancy would probably go up. So it's one of the, it's a balance of supply and demand.
Sure.
In the capitalist market, so they're just having to balance that. I would say during weekends like Andrew just said, the weekends where we have the bigger sports events, it is packed and people are having to drive 30, 40 minutes just to be able to get a room.
I guess in your, since you're more in tune with the industry, the travel and tourism, compared to some of the more metropolitan areas, what is the typical occupancy rate for hotels like in a Mecklenburg or in a Wayne County?
45% to 50%.
Okay.
Yeah. But that's the whole city. I mean, you have downtown districts that are going to run higher. You've got, but you know, when you've got as many hotel rooms as they have, you know, it's going to lower that occupancy.
So you could make a pretty good argument saying that we probably could use more hotels given what the occupancy is in other larger metropolitan areas.
Yeah, I would say so. I think especially, to me personally, I think another downtown hotel would be huge. That would help us with our walkability and some other things, preferably with a little bit more meeting space. We'd love the Hilton Garden Inn, but it'd be great to have more meeting space at a downtown hotel.
I have a question. Is housing insecurity being factored into hotel stays? I know we've got a significant amount of homeless people living in hotels.
Yes.
And what made me think about it, PJ, was you mentioning that, you bringing that topic up and you guys talking about last weekend. I know we had a situation where a homeless person was staying at the Baymont. And this weekend, the rates went up to $150 to $192 per night. And so I made a note as you were talking about hotel quality because for that hotel, I was concerned, not just about the homeless family that I was working with, I was also concerned about people coming in for homecoming and going to the Baymont and it not being of the quality that they would have thought it needed to be for $150 to $192 per night.
Yeah, so the best way to answer that is when you have a long-term resident within a hotel, we do not count that occupancy tax. We don't really count that because the law in North Carolina is you pay occupancy tax in a hotel, but if you stay longer than 90 days, then you're not subject to that tax and then the hotel would return that tax because it's a long-term stay. So typically in the long-term calculations, those rooms are not counted towards the travel and tourism dollar because they're not.
No, not towards the travel tourism dollar, but just that it affects travel.
Oh, sure, yeah. It would affect the amount of rooms available, for sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Andrew, I do have a question. Is there a way to look at what I would call the hotels that service the hospital and see if they need more in that area? Because I've talked to a lot of people that say they come in to try and stay for relatives or child, a lot of it's children. Because we do service most of East North Carolina and a lot of times they're full and they're having to go to more higher-end hotels, you know, that charge a lot more, but that's the only thing that's available. Are you able to look at that and say what their occupancy use is, the ones that I call surround the campus over there versus our other hotels?
Yeah, we could ask. We'd have to get that information from them. I think the best course of action are the patient reps over there because they're the ones that are going to work with the families and get them housing. So we can certainly contact them and see if they've got data on that. I don't personally have data on that.
That's one of the things that people come into town and want to stay because their kids are not there or something. And, you know, they're there for four or five nights and because they're full, they're having to go to a hotel that may be $100 more a night. That's the only option they have.
Right, yeah.
That's why I'm asking that question.
We have to look into it.
One more quick question about that 60% occupancy and Charlotte Mecklenburg being 40, 45%. What is considered a healthy occupancy percentage?
It's all based on your population base. I mean, you want to be, in a bigger city, you want to be around 50%. You know, the smaller, the town, the higher your occupancy should be. And again, it's all based on your amenities and what you have on your calendar of events and what kind of larger event you're running. You know, the downtown occupancy for Charlotte Mecklenburg is probably in the 60s, right around the convention center. So it's all relative to the area.
And again, I would just be hesitant on just gauging it based off of that occupancy rate. Because remember, that occupancy rate is just an aggregate of the whole entire period.
Right.
During times of high volume, that occupancy rate's going way high. Also, the rates per room are going way high. Just at that hotel you speak of that went up that much, I would dare say some of the finer hotels were at $600 to $700 a night. So they flex those rates in those times of high volume.
Yeah, and that's, again, that's supply and demand. I've had, I get calls all the time, is this price gouging? And by state law, it's not. Price gouging only comes into effect with hotels when there's a reason for people to have to leave their home. Hurricane, your evacuation, something like that. That's when that law comes into effect for hotels. Otherwise, it's pure supply and demand. And I know people have talked about the hotel rates here. It's in every city and every town that has special event weekends. That's what hotels do.
And we do have quite a few hospitality developers that are looking our direction, which they like that 65% occupancy rate. It's really attractive.
But they do.
So that makes us, and from the standpoint of it, there is word on the street that Streets Talk, that there might be a sports complex coming down the road. So people are also looking at that.
Is that the word on the street?
That's the word on the street.
I've heard that too.
We're putting that word out on the street. Well, speaking of sports, great segue. So I wanted to give you some research. I love data and I love making my decisions based on data. And this is something that Project Play does every couple of years. They did skip a year because of COVID. They look at what youth and amateur sports are doing and how much people per person are spending on sports. And I like these studies, but there's also some flaws in these studies to me. This is average amount spent past year for child's top sport. That means their top sport. We have kids that are playing two and three sports at a time, which means that some of this data is probably a little low that we're seeing. But everything from team registrations, equipment, uniforms, travel, lodging, lessons and instructions, camps and athletic schools, I think those can be combined, other expenses. But you can see from, gosh, 2018 to 2024, the cost per child playing a sport has really skyrocketed. And so that's really important for us since we're looking at kind of investing a little bit more into sports travel and sports tourism. To see those numbers and everything that we see continues to show that even during recession times, those kids are going to play their sports. That's what the parents are going to spend their money on. So this is a great, great chart that I want to share with you since we are looking at sports travel. Little League softball happened, obviously, it seems like years ago now, the last August, but we had record-setting viewership. This is great for our exposure. It was great because we generated $1.6 million in the local economy. But total attendance reported by ESPN was over 18,000. That's huge. It's a lot of people exposed to Greenville and Pitt County. Yes, a lot of them were locals, but we talked to a lot of people out there and we had people that were down from Delaware, West Virginia, Maryland, Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina and Tennessee that came specifically just for softball. No team affiliation, just came to watch. Peak viewership, 2.98 million viewers on our championship game. Every time they throw that ball, they see Greenville, North Carolina when the catcher catches it. Can't buy that kind of exposure. It's awesome. And so you can see everything was up. And so we're excited about those numbers for Little League. And then last thing, and this really is also going to help our marketing for the city. Prior to COVID, we had seven full-time equivalents. We've got these folks in place. We're back at 7.5. So we've got an extra equivalent based on where we were before COVID. But we did hire a social media coordinator. That's going to be huge, especially when we're trying to market our sports complex at NRC and also just marketing the community because we've never had the funding for a social media coordinator and you've got to have one. It just changes so fast. As soon as you put your stuff up, it starts falling below and you've got to have constant presence in social media. And then we also hired a visitor experience specialist, want to try and make our visitor center more of an educational place where people can come learn about Greenville-Pitt County and why to stay, why to work, what, you know, why do we want to live here and why do we want to play here? So we're excited to have those two folks on board as well. So things are going well and we still have more work to do, but I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Does ESPN, do they really like that viewership numbers? Is that what they expected or did it exceed their expectations?
I don't know how to answer that question. I don't know what ESPN was expecting. I know that they were records from last year. Every time we, all I care about, Mr. Robinson, is that we are higher than we were last year.
That's always good.
Yes, that's always good. We never want to see this. So we just want to continue to, but I think they're pleased based on the fact that they're putting more games on ESPN and ESPN2 and not as many on ESPN+. Showing torn holes instead of the girls playing softball.
The fact that Greenville, North Carolina is now prime time on that Sunday afternoon nationally televised is a great sign. The network, ABC, ESPN, would not be doing that if they're not moving in the right direction. And just in the Mayor Noss conversation with the President of Little League International, which is also a good indication of where ESPN falls in this, is that they could not be happier with the experience that they receive here in Greenville, North Carolina.
And I think it's kind of unprecedented too because, you know, I think they're finally starting to dabble in that segment of the sport that they haven't before. Because I know when I was out in Tennessee and they were finishing up some of the regional matchups throughout the country, ESPN was broadcasting those on a national platform too. And I know we were at hotels and we were watching those games out there. So I think that it's tough to say because I think they've just started that and they're continuing to build up and build up. I think more and more people are really starting to catch on to softball and watching it on TV. And I think it's going to get, grow the more that they do. And I think ESPN probably understands that too, that, you know, it kind of has to catch up. Things go, it's, things are so cyclical, right? You know, sometimes baseball is really popular and then people get sick of baseball and they move on to the NBA or they move into the NFL and they just, it does that. But I think that we're starting to really see softball get broadcast on a national platform. And I think that, you know, you'll probably see those numbers go up continuously as the years go on.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Hey, we blew away your 10-minute.
Challenge.
We just killed your presentation and now Daryl's going to do 10 minutes here too.
Andrew has only been the preamble to this presentation.
Hey, if you can do it 10 minutes, I bet Mike will give you a huge raise.
Well, we do have some bets on this.
Yeah, we have some.
Item Number 2, Watershed Master Plan and Stormwater Capital Project update. We have with us our Civil Engineer 3, Daryl Morse, for the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council and City Manager. So I'm here today to update you about our watershed master plans. If you did not realize it, our current watershed master plans were completed and adopted nine years ago. And so we are coming up on a 10-year renewal of our watershed master plans. And we'll be coming to you later with a contract for watershed master plan update. So in preparation for that, wanted to give you kind of a snapshot of where we are and what we have got from the watershed master plans that we completed back in 2016. So to start with, I'll briefly go over the watershed master plans in 2016 and what they did. What came from that with the Stormwater Advisory Committee recommendations and utility rate study. A little bit about the development regulations that happened after that with rule changes with the state. A snapshot of our capital project status. These are projects identified, started or completed since the watershed master plans. And the council at the time loved it so much that you guys said, go and do all of them now together. And so we hired three different firms and every surveyor within 100 miles of Greenville to complete them. Those plans included inventory of our stormwater system, every catch basin, drop inlet, pipe, culvert, all parts of our stormwater system. Modeling those stormwater flows for flooding and capacity issues. Identifying those areas where we have problems, where we're undersized, need more capacity, have flooding. Identifying stream bank erosion and analyzing our streams. And then coming up with a list of capital projects and recommendations for how to address both water quality and water quantity. In that data collection period, doing that inventory, we discovered we had roughly 227 miles of storm drain pipe. Almost 16,000 structures, drop inlets, catch basins and whatnot. They walked over 44 miles of stream and did 200 stream cross-sections. So quite an extensive effort that first got around. We determined during this master plan project, desired levels of service for all of our city streets. And that varied depending on the type of system that we were talking about. So all of our pipes have at least a 10-year desired level of service. Minor thoroughfare crossings, these are the culverts, underroads at a 25-year, major thoroughfare 50 with railroads at 100-year storm. So the idea is in a 100-year storm, the railroad shouldn't flood. That's what, basically what level of service refers to.
What's the approximate inches or amount of water for a 10-year event?
5.8 inches in a 24-hour period.
There, okay, we can see the numbers.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Yeah, that's a, that's a 10-year, 24-hour storm. At least as it currently is per NOAA. Those numbers change, and I'll mention that a little bit later, that we're, regardless of what you believe is the cause, we are seeing more rain and more intense rain when we see it. So yesterday's numbers are not today's numbers.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think we paid $1 million for that stormwater master plan, didn't we?
I think the original one, yes.
He's going to show you how much that has produced.
Oh, yeah. I'm, hey, I'm not arguing. I remember sitting here and we had a heavy rainfall and I remember we had a dumpster at that business down there that was floating in Uptown Greenville.
I'll tell you what, that Town Creek Culvert.
I am happy to say that since Town Creek Culvert has gone in, that dumpster has not moved.
I remember seeing pictures, I said, oh, my gosh.
Victor and I sat in the office and watched the security video on the cameras of the dumpster going around the building.
And for y'all, for those that were not here, I mean, it literally dumped. It was fast. It was almost like that and next thing you know, we have dumpsters floating.
So those master plans that were invested 10 years ago, the results of them was developed a list of prioritized capital projects. And of those projects, there were different types of projects for our open systems. These are our streams and our culverts, things like that. Our closed systems, our neighborhood storm drainage, pipe network, water quality projects and stream stabilization projects. Altogether, the projects identified over the seven watershed master plans combined totaled just over $200 million of capital improvement needs. This does not take into account the normal replacement of the lifespan of the pipes and systems. This was in undersized capacity issues. There was an additional $150 million of identified just lifespan replacement needs. The other thing to keep in note, those are $2016. And so 2016 was prior to COVID. So these dollars today would be, the prices that we're seeing on our capital projects are two and a half to three times the amount that we budgeted for in 2016. So that would, that would equate to over half a billion dollars worth of stormwater projects in today's dollars.
This is Darrell's way of buttering up that he's going to see you in.
Two months.
June, June of next.
January.
June of next year.
I'm coming. So obviously, this is a, this is a problem too big to solve. I remember I had just started here in Greenville in 2016 and we were doing this presentation and council was giving me glassed-over looks like, how do we fix that? Well, it's the same way you eat an elephant, one bite at a time, right? So we.
I object to that.
Some of us don't eat the elephant.
He meant to say berries.
Hey, you need a really big watermelon. How about that? Is that better? So the follow-up to the watershed master plans was the Stormwater Advisory Committee. So council appointed a Stormwater Advisory Committee of stakeholders that met over two years, 14 times, and took a look at the services that we provide in stormwater. The extent of service, where we provide it, what we do, the level of service, how often we do, what type of maintenance and what the wait time is if you call in with a stormwater problem before someone can get to you. We looked at our capital project prioritization and the list of those projects and how we make those determinations. And then there was a financial analysis and rate study of what our stormwater utility rate could pay for of our long list of wants. And also looked at our ordinances and policy recommendations as well, how to be the most efficient with the dollars that we have. The results of that Stormwater Advisory Committee came out with some recommendations that the city should maintain the stormwater drainage system if it carries public water, basically being any stormwater running off of public property or right-of-way. And that regardless of where those, that system is located, in the right-of-way or outside of the right-of-way, we maintain it if it has public water in it, all the way to the edge of our jurisdiction. That we should increase our level of service for our maintenance activities. That's how often we sweep the streets, how often we clean catch basins, check our culverts, those type of things, that Public Works does a great job of maintaining. How, that we should do regular master plan updates, hence why I'm here, that's this one. And that we needed to do all of this, we needed to increase staff for maintenance inspections, asset management and utility billing and revenue. So that utility rate study, the rate in 2018, when this study was done, was $5.35 per ERU per month. An ERU is 2,000 square foot of impervious on your site or portion thereof per month. The average, the average utility rate payer, it pays two ERUs. So at the time was $10.70 a month. The SWAT recommended a $2 increase for five years, which would have brought it all the way up to 15.35 over a five-year period. They also recommended a minimum of one ERU per account. We have some of the apartments and stuff that split that and they have very small bills. And a minimum or a $1.20 a month flat admin fee to cover the cost of actually billing and for the billing staff. The 2019 council looked at that and that was too big of a watermelon to chew. So they decided that what they could stomach was $1 per year increase for four years. And then that, then COVID hit. And so that delayed due to COVID didn't want to compound the issues. And so it started in July of '21. We have now completed those four years and our current rate is at $9.35 per ERU per month. This gives us a projected revenue of about $11.5 million a year for our stormwater revenue. Now, one thing I want to point out, we talked earlier about how the watershed master plans increased, the cost increased two and a half to three times. You'll notice our rate did not increase two and a half to three times. So all of the, all of the increase that was adopted in 2019 that we were putting towards these additional services, basically was eat up with inflation. Relatively speaking, we're, we, we're doing good to break even, but we're also still providing those additional services, those, a higher level of service with that additional staff and equipment. So what's the trade-off? Well, the trade-off is our capital projects. Since then, the next update was the state made some modifications to the stormwater rules that we are required to implement. Some changes in those rules. We now regulate high-density versus low-density development, requiring stormwater controls. We, since the master plans, implemented additional peak flow requirements in the 1-5-10 and in areas of concern, the 25-year storm events, requiring those peak flow controls. We still have nutrient reduction requirements for nitrogen and phosphorus. The state just kind of changed the calculation method for that. So the stormwater regulations have become more, more stringent since 2016. And, you know, that, that helps with our issue, but obviously it, it only helps for ensuring that new development does not make things worse, it doesn't necessarily make it better. With those new regulations, we took the opportunity to add in some flexibility for the development community where we could, in the form of a fee-in lieu of detention program. This allows the developer, instead of providing onsite controls where those controls might not be effective or might not make sense, they can pay into a fee-in lieu program and the city can then use those funds to fund those capital projects that we've identified are more critical than the pond being on their particular site. In some cases, it was actually counterproductive because they were having to build a stormwater detention pond in a floodplain. And, and we didn't want to require it, but it was the requirement. So this allows us to give them a different option and we can take those, those funds, those same funds they would have spent providing stormwater controls and invest those into more appropriate projects.
Is that a one-time fee payment?
It is.
So they can't break it up into payments, they got to pay it one time and one time all the time?
One time at, at the time of development, yes.
And how do you, how do you determine that fee?
So we did a study of the cost of providing stormwater treatments. And the idea was to try to make it balance out that the fee would be a wash as to what they would spend to construct an equivalent stormwater treatment device that, that they no longer have to. So the idea was for the development, for the developer, that it would be about the same money spent. Where the, where the savings comes is they save on land and ongoing perpetual maintenance and inspection of that facility.
But that has to be approved. It's not something you just do instead of build the.
Correct. It is. And on top of that, it's limited in its scope. So what we did not want was everybody to be able to buy out of the rules and then pass those problems along to their downstream neighbor. So we limited the fee-in lieu program to only those areas where there is not a problem downstream of you. All of the red here, there is a problem downstream. So everything in red is not eligible for using the fee-in lieu unless they're under a 10% increase. The areas in white are eligible to use it. Those are basically the ones that are discharging directly to the river. Over time, as we complete projects, capital improvement projects and we better our system with these projects, we anticipate this red area actually shrinking and turning white so that we, more and more fee-in lieu will be available as we resolve those problems downstream.
The thick green line is the Tar River?
The thick green line through the middle, yes, that's the tar. All right, so now I'd like to tell you a little bit about the stormwater capital projects. These are the list of stormwater projects that have been started or completed since the watershed master plans in 2016. So they're in a few different categories. This is not the only chart. For our open systems, these are our, our open streams and culverts, major drainage systems. We've got a few projects you may have, may remember approving contracts for. Fire Tower Road, Trofager Drive, Corey Road, York Road and Memorial Drive at Parkers Creek. We, we managed to work with the DOT to do some of those. We've built some partners throughout these capital projects to help us accomplish them as best we can. The other thing we've done is we have been able to go after grant funding. Using these watershed master plans, it has been, these plans have been critical to us applying for and getting grant funding from several different agencies that, that helps us. I've got a little bit of those numbers a little later. Our secondary systems, these are the closed pipe systems that are typically in neighborhood, tip your street, stormwater drainage, Greenbrier, Greenfield Terrace, South Elm Street, Cedar Lane, Arlington and Hall Drive. And you see, these are in various, some of these have been designed and are waiting on construction dollars. Some of these have actually been completed. Some even completed in-house by our Public Works operating.
Darrell, what's on South Elm Street?
The South Elm Street project is from Fourth Street to the river. The pipe is in poor condition and failing. Public Works is having to perform far greater amount of maintenance on that pipe. It basically needs replacement. It's also slightly undersized in some places, so the upsizing of the pipe, but mostly it's a condition issue. The other part of it would be daylighting the portion of stream from the Greenway to the river, the last, the last little bit pipe now, we would open that up to daylight a channel. We also had a proposal for a constructed wetland there near the Dog Park, just, just upstream of the Greenway. So that's part of that Elm Street project. It was bid and unfortunately, the contractor went out of business. And so it's now put, put back into the mix, waiting for funding. We had a really good price on it too.
Of course we did.
That's why they ran out of business.
That project is fantastic because that, most, most of that area, certainly from, I would say roughly, I mean, certainly after First Street, you're really getting into floodplain there. And many, I know the apartments are gone and opening that up into a restored wetlands would just be perfect for that area. So fingers crossed.
Darrell, let me make one comment in that a lot of these stormwater projects, the community only sees what's in their front yard or their backyard. But the fact is, is that you, you can't piecemeal these types of, of projects because if you correct one without doing the whole, you're just going to create a problem somewhere else. And they're massive. Like I said, just to correct that Elm Street issue is, it's probably higher than that. That's $13.1 million. It's massive. So these are very, very large comprehensive projects that you just can't, you got to do the whole thing.
All right. The next category is our stream stabilization projects. And we have managed to get some grant funding for that as well. Some of these are cases where the stream has eroded to well overhead high and it's endangering buildings, sheds, fences, sewer systems exposed, lots of, lots of things like that in danger of, of causing even more problems because of the ongoing erosion in the streams. And so this St. Andrews Cedar Stream, we did a repair to this, the stream bank next to the Greenway off of 10th Street and some repairs on Crooked Creek. There's, there's more identified in the plans. These are the ones that we've been able to, to work towards. Water quality projects, JCPark has a forested wetland as a, as a research and innovative facility, Corey Road Detention Facility and South Elm Street that we talked about with that constructed well in there. You'll notice, I don't have any numbers on here because we managed to work the water quality projects in with the water quantity project. quality projects in with the water quantity projects. And so a lot of times, that's how we are able to leverage grant funding. And by using the watershed master plan where we're identifying them as both quantity and quality issues, we're able to use that master plan to justify, no matter whether it's a FEMA grant or a DEQ grant that we're going for, we've got a way to justify each and every The next one, these are some projects that have been completed since those master plans but were not actually listed in the watershed master plans. Couple big ones on here. The Town Creek Culvert Project, it was already in process when the master plans were being created, so it was not specifically identified. The Build Project was not identified. Note that this is only the stormwater component of the Build Project. That $4 million is by no means the entire Build Project. Our annual stormwater repair and replace contract at a million and a half a year, and the recently completed Public Works Pipe Project, the big pipe running right through the middle of the Public Works yard. Altogether, this is probably the slide you're more interested in, the total slides. Altogether, we're talking about, in the last 10 years, $114 million worth of stormwater projects, started or completed. Those that are started and designed, they're waiting on construction dollars. We've actually spent about $68 million so far of that 114 of these projects that you saw today. Of that, we've actually contracted for $20 million worth of grants. We've been selected or awarded for more than that, but we have to get FEMA to release some of that money. So we anticipate another $24 million worth of grants coming soon. So it is these watershed master plans that have allowed us to go after this $48 million worth of grant money.
What's the process for FEMA releasing those funds?
Court. So we are part of, we are part of the list of communities who were awarded brick grants. We have two brick grants, and we were awarded the full project, but it's a phased project. So we only have a signed grant agreement for Phase 1, the design of both St. Andrews and Fire Tower. The current administration issued some decrees, and FEMA shut down the brick program entirely and is clawing back what they can of the brick program. We don't even know if we're going to get fully reimbursed for our Phase 1 awards. We've been told we are not getting the Phase 2 components of those awards. However, we have been working with emergency management to convert those grant programs to the HMGP program, which is the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. That's actually Hurricane Helene or Tropical Storm Helene dollars. When there's a disaster in the state, that money is available statewide. It's federal money that's made available, and it's available statewide. And so the state is using that to offset the, all the brick grants that were promised but can't be fulfilled. Having said that, there's also ongoing lawsuits that North Carolina is party to against FEMA to get them to release those brick funds that they've already awarded.
How long ago were we, I remember getting a notification, how long ago was it that we were notified about those brick grants that were awarded? Was it a year ago?
About a year ago.
Yeah. It's been over a year, a two-year period. But like I said, we're going around different avenues through the state, through the Hurricane Lane route to receive some grant funding there, even try to throw the bulkhead in there. But no, yeah, we're going to try to take advantage of these guys will take advantage of every single dollar that we can get in here, that's for sure.
Daryl, no matter how much money is being held up by the current administration?
Those two projects, those two projects altogether, I don't have it up here. The total award for Fire Tower was $12 million. Of that, Phase 1 is only about a million. So the majority of it is in construction. The total award for St. Andrews was $3.4 million, and so far, the Phase 1 is about $600,000 of that. So we're talking about probably $13, $14 million to the city that's outstanding with Phase 2.
So Daryl, the Corey Road project, the detention, and I apologize, because I always ask this question, the Corey Road detention project, seems like the money was called back for that. Do I have that right?
No, we got that money. So that was through ARPA. It was ARPA money that was given to the Division of Water Infrastructure with the state, and then they put it out through what's called LASSI grant. And so we got that due to the water quality components of that project. We originally asked for $7.5 million, they gave us $5. So we didn't get all that we wanted, but we got a $5 million grant award.
Thank you.
That project is ongoing with the acquisitions pending. We're about to begin construction on that. It's under a design-build contract.
And how big is that going to be, like 25?
It's about an eight-acre constructed wetland. It's a pretty large constructed wetland. Moving forward, our watershed master plan update. So we have gone through advertisement and made selection for a consultant that is Ardua, which is the new name for W.K. Dixon, you may be familiar with, maybe not. They were the lead consultant on the last master plans. They've been selected to do this watershed master plan update. The idea behind this new update is to update our current inventory, use new rainfall rates, address increased development that have happened over the last 10 years, there's been a little bit of it, updated our land use plans, and make sure that we count in any completed projects that we have done, so that we reflect those in our new modeling. Also, from that, we will develop an updated project list and prioritization matrix, analyzing criticality of those projects and the options, some additional alternatives for regional investments, larger, more regional types of facilities that can provide benefits. The other thing we found, that we use this master plan every day, that's really what's different about Grengel's watershed master plan than all the other communities' plans. The other communities do these plans, and most of the time, they get some grant funding to do it, and then it creates a notebook on a shelf, and that's where it sits. We use our master plan regularly. We refer citizens to it, we refer real estate agents to it, and then we use it every time we get an email about another grant. I got one this morning about another half-million-dollar grant. We go down the list of our projects from the master plan and say, what is the top project that fits that grant, and how can we apply? And normally, we've got one that fits it. So the master plan allows us easy application for that. But to even further take that, we want to make sure that with this update, we are getting project fact sheets, just one, two pagers about every project in the master plan, that you can share with your constituents, we can share with lobbyists, and we can show the public, these are the projects that we hope to do if we can find the funding to do them. We also want to take a look at equity and how flooding affects different communities differently. We don't all have the same resources, and we don't all have the same ability to recover when we're impacted by things like flooding. One thing I wanted to point out, I love this graph up here at the top. What that is, is that's actually a cross-section of the city of Grengel. If you were to slice Grengel and look at it from the side, this is the cross-section. And over here on the left, where it's way up high, that is downtown, because downtown is way up high. And over on the right is north Grengel. So the Tar River would be right here, and all of this is north Grengel. Those colors on that graph represent the different year flood levels. And so what you see is, it's just a matter of topography, that we have a massive floodplain, you see on the map here, the blue area, a massive floodplain north of the river, that also happens to be places where communities don't have as many resources and are struggle to recover from events like this. So we want to take acknowledgement of that in our study and determine where we need to focus certain resources and efforts to help with equity. We also want to look at our operational and regulatory recommendations as well, what can we do there? So our next steps from here is, the next thing, I should be coming back to you in January at the regular council meeting with a contract with Ardua to complete a watershed master plan update. And so we'll be presenting that, and we'll execute that, complete the watershed master plans. It should take between 12 to 18 months to do this process. After that, after the new master plan is updated, we're starting this whole process over again, just like from 10 years ago. The next step will be to look at our utility rate and do a rate study again, and say, hey, we now know, we have an updated picture of where we stand, what our needs are, and let's take a look at how do we finance those? How do we eat the watermelon, one bite at a time? So that's part of developing that implementation strategy. So those are our next steps, and if you've got any other questions, we'd be happy to help.
Daryl, I do, this is not intended in a critical way, but there's projects that have been on tap since my previous ones. I'm thinking about St. Andrews, I'm thinking about some other projects, and it seems like in the current climate with ever-increasing costs, you know, it just, I can't imagine how frustrating it is for you and for others, you know, in your department to know that these things need to be done, and yet here we sit 20 years later, and it just seems like it gets further and further out of reach. And you can't really impose, you know, you can't really ask, you know, that stormwater rate to cover all these capital projects. How do you see that changing, or do you see that changing? How do we get where we want to go?
I think prioritization is key, right? We're not going to be able to do everything. I can't stand here and tell you that I know a way for us to come up with a billion dollars of stormwater money to do everything in our master plan and then some. So I think prioritization is key, and really looking at those criticality factors. What we mean by criticality is we examine the likelihood of failure multiplied by the consequence of failure. And so that determines your criticality and how you prioritize things. And so looking at that, we can decide where to spend what dollars we have. The other thing is obviously leveraging grant funds as much as we can. We've done really well at that, and eventually, eventually those agencies will work out their issues, and we'll get what we get or not what we don't. Right now, the ambiguity and unknown is more difficult than anything. We get a different story every day.
And I would...
Thanks, Daryl.
I would echo what Daryl just said, because it was a very forthright answer, because that's not, that answer is not just an answer that we're giving back to councils. That's an answer that we have to have with many people from our community after every single rain event that happens around here. Y'all get, you get the emails, and you forward them to us, and then we go back and we talk to the property owners and talk about the comprehensive nature of this and the fact that it is, it's a half a billion dollars worth of projects. There's no way this community can take care of all that at one time, even over an extended period of time. We're going to have to prioritize, and that's not always the most popular answer. But it's just the reality of where we are. With that level of projects, there's not enough money in the world to be able to solve all those issues. You've just got to take it one bite at the watermelon at a time and just prioritize what those projects are. I believe it's actually, I am very proud of our stormwater engineering department to, over the last 10 years, and the environment that we have been in with the COVID, with the inflation, with the interest rates, to say that we have moved on over $100 million of the projects, and we've expended $67 million and made some major improvements. It has put a small dent into it. It's enough, it's never going to be enough. It's never going to be.
So when I was, we were talking, there was a meeting, and Parks came up, and this is just, you know, one of those 30,000-foot-view questions, but I almost wonder, are we looking at the need for a bond, like a Parks bond, a stormwater bond, infrastructure bond? Because there are several areas, it seems like in our city, where there are longstanding issues and needs, capital needs, that it's just not going to be possible pay through just regular taxes.
And I think what we've got, and Daryl, I'll answer this question, I think what we've got is a very strong water utility rate system, the $9, and looking at that and what we've done over a four-year period, and the money that we're able to access from the grants. Let's just face it, if you did a bond today, there's no feasible way that we could even spend it after another decade. Because of the amount of time it takes to engineer it and the amount of time to bid it, you can't only do so many projects at one time. So I don't believe that is the most efficient way, because what that does, it puts so much money in one fell swoop at your doorstep, and you don't have the capacity to actually get the projects done, taking them methodical, step-by-step, knowing, and I'm not here to say that we're not going to have to adjust that utility rate, you're not going to say that, because like Daryl said, every single dollar of efficiency that we hope to gain from that increase has been swept up by inflation. So we're going to have to increase that rate, but I don't believe it has to be done through a bond, because there's just not the capacity to get it done.
Okay.
I will say, to add to that, we certainly looked at those options, and so far, we've been able to avoid going into debt to do it, and that's due to getting those grants. So we've been able to move forward with doing the projects with grants. And what that really means is that those projects that are not tied to a grant move down the priority list, because we've then got to spend our funds to match the grants in order to get the money. You got to spend the money. And so any projects that aren't associated with a grant then get moved below those grant projects on the priority list.
Thanks, Daryl.
I do want to say, I echo what Michael said. I think that you guys have done a tremendous job with figuring out ways to be able to address some of those issues. And I remember having those conversations 10 years ago, when we were talking about the amount of needs, and I remember, I think it was about $350 million, if I remember correctly, and I was like, how in the world are we going to possibly do that? But you guys have done an outstanding job, being able to allocate the funds through the stormwater fees that are being charged, while also leveraging some of that with state and federal dollars to be able to get some of those projects done. You know, I think the frustrating thing is, a local elected official is that, you know, sometimes it doesn't seem like there's a real plan in place to fix things, and that's not just here. I think we do have a plan in place, but I look at it from the NC DOT standpoint, too, the tremendous amount of projects that are being held up over time, and I feel like they don't have a plan, right? We at least know what our plan is and how we get to that point. You know, I don't think that problem's been solved at the NC DOT as far as, hey, people are transitioning to electric vehicles and we're collecting our revenue at the pumps, how are we going to make up for that loss of revenue? We know the revenue source here and how we fix it, right? You know, we can adjust that. I don't think they've made that determination, and to me, that's a frustrating thing. You know, it's frustrating that we can't do every single project, but at least we have a plan in place, and we know how we can leverage it, and we can continue to lobby to get these projects done, and we have to make modifications as time moves forward. And we'll have those discussions through the budget process and make the determination of what's needed as a city to move forward. So I appreciate all that you guys do and the hard work that you've put in over the last decade to make sure that the city's prepared for the future.
Thank you.
Alright, man. That's all we have for the agenda.
Alright, I'm going to kick it over to our attorney.
I'm going to kick it over to our attorney, Mr. McGirt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council members, I recommend that council adopt the following motion, holding a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-3, 18.11, to instruct the public body staff when negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of contracts or proposed contracts for the acquisition of real properties by purchase, option, exchange, or lease.
Do you have a motion to?
Second.
All right. Motion to be made by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Foreman.
No, you don't.
All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed to say nay.
Question mark. Five, zero.
We are officially in closed session.